Let's call the meeting to order. We are the Planning Commission. We are continuing our year-long review of the Redding zoning ordinance to incorporate legislative changes under the terms of a grant. And we have Martha with us to help advise on some of those terms. We have a pretty big agenda tonight, so let's try to be efficient and get going. Changes to the agenda, there's one change that I would like to make. Martha had sent us some stuff from, it's required by Act 181, some of which we've already done, but it's little snivlets, and I'd like to just run through it all quickly and move those off the to-do pile and into the done pile. So that would be one change I would like to make to the agenda.
We're gonna do that first?
We can do it, yeah, before letter A in section five. So I move to change the agenda to consider the Act 181 changes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from July 10th that Shenan sent around and sent to the town clerk. Anybody have any changes on those?
I didn't. Didn't. So I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we have reports.
So before we move on from changes, Dee, did we get any information on that? Martha, did you circulate anything on small business zoning districts?
No.
Okay, so can we remove that from the conversation this time?
It was to have a general kind of initial discussion.
Okay.
About what you have and maybe what you might be looking for.
Okay, so if we get to it, we'll just have a general discussion.
I think it's just intro of the topic.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Mail and email. I checked the mail. The one thing that we got was something from Weathersfield. They're amending their code to make some changes around environmentally friendly issues. They sent us a copy of what they're doing as their, but I don't think it is anything we need to worry about or work on. Jane, you check the other ones?
Yes, someone added their name to the interested persons list. Whole Art Foundation here. That was me.
Okay.
I remember it.
Regional Planning Commission, we do not have Kathy Rondo, right? Okay. Energy Board, it must not be Brian Callie's time to report. Zoning Administrator, I don't see Bob Allen.
Well, I had, there was a new permit given to Arthur Dwyer, Carolyn Ferguson, on 20 Mile Street Road, to build a 28 by 28 garage with loft.
Okay.
That was approved.
Great, thank you. ZDA announcements?
Yes, I just wanted to read something, put it in the record about the Whole Art Foundation hearing. So I'd like to give an update on the conditional use permit application that was filed by the Whole Art Foundation. As everyone knows, this is a complex situation involving state and local permit regulations. So before I give any details as to where the ZDA is, I just want to say that the Whole Art Foundation is an incredible asset to the town of Redding. It's completely understandable that the Whole Art Foundation needs to protect their property from damage due to flooding. But no less important are the lives and properties of residents who also reside in this flood-prone area. A principal issue is the bridge under 106 next to the Whole Art Foundation. The bridge is controlled by VTран, Vermont Agency of Transportation, which is in the process of designing a replacement bridge. The applicant is cooperating with the state as a plan for the bridge is being developed. I want everyone to know that the ZDA is taking this issue very seriously and is looking far beyond what might seem to be obvious. Because of the recent flooding up north, the July hearing was postponed. State reps were unable to finish advising the applicant or attend the July hearing date. The applicant has asked for continuance of the hearings, so these advisors complete the work that the state is conducting and return their focus to this matter. We will announce when a day can be scheduled for the continued hearing. So it will definitely be announced in the front porch form, the informer, if there's time. I really have no idea when it's gonna be, and it could be rewarned, I'm not sure. We're finding that out if it has to be. So that's it.
Okay, thank you for the update.
And if we have to rewarn it, it has to be 15 days in advance?
Yeah. I mean, we'll try everything to make sure everyone knows it's happy.
And we're basically rating on the state at this point, right?
Yeah.
So the flooding in the Northeast Kingdom isn't gonna help the schedule much either?
No.
Bad last night again.
Yeah. Tomorrow.
And tomorrow, they just pop out of nowhere.
Holy cow.
Can you imagine eight inches of rain in two hours overnight?
No, I can't. That would be bad for town Redding.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's it for our announcements. We are now into the continuing business and review of the zoning ordinance section, which is the bulk of this meeting. The stuff that we've added under chapter 181 are recent changes that the state, I believe, is just requiring, and Martha, maybe you can walk us through those to let us know what we have to be putting in the code. I have changes for the accessory on farm business, the definition of interested person, the limitations for site plan review, and also warning, and parking and loading.
Yes, I'll do parking and loading last, 'cause that'll kind of run into what's already on the agenda, so.
So you can take those in whichever order makes sense for you.
Okay, let's see.
So for clarification in the public, we're going over just the changes that are required by the state?
Yes.
There's nothing else has been added or changed?
Nothing else. So in the latest round of legislative changes, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the state sort of tweaked lots of things that we've already either gone through or weren't looking at at all that we have to change while we're doing this to be compliant.
Okay.
It says I can't share. Sharing is not turned on.
Here it says all, okay. Okay, we can start sharing, so it says all. All right, try that. Yeah.
All right. Okay, so you guys had already approved accessory on farm business. Then in just this legislative session that just ended, they made some changes to the definitions. And they're on the screen there in red, and I also emailed them to you.
And just to confirm, these are required, yes? These are not discretionary?
Correct, yep. So, yes, I'm asking to approve them, but, you know, they're in the statute, so.
So they've changed the, they've changed the definition, instead of accessory to a farm, it's activity that is on a farm, and the revenues can be higher than that of a farming operation. And then it goes on to talk about qualifying products and events, basically, that they can hold. Oh, no, the events have to change, just the qualifying products.
It used to be the products had to be produced on the farm. Now they have to be produced on a farm, not necessarily the farm that they're being sold at. And you can also have things like t-shirts and mugs, and you can have baked bread and other things.
Do they have to be produced on a Vermont farm?
It doesn't say a Vermont farm, it says a farm.
So this is a big change.
It's a pretty big change, yeah. And the other one was a small change, qualifying product means a product that is, it used to say that is holy, and then the whole list of things. They crossed out holy, so other than that, those are the two changes to accessory on farm businesses.
So, so you could have a big store that sold farm products. Is that right?
Farm products from anywhere.
On a farm, I mean.
From Canada.
Cannabis, what'd you say? That's a separate reading.
Canada.
Oh, I thought you said cannabis. I'm like, that's a whole nother.
Okay, so the language that you have in here, this is, this is the language. This is what we have to do.
This is the language.
Okay, then I think that we don't have a choice but to incorporate this into our code, but I would just note that this is potentially a big deal.
So I guess you talk to your legislator, legislator.
Okay. Do we know you? All right, so as has been our custom, we haven't been voting on every little change because that would take a lot of time and it seems like a lot of rabbit's rolls, but we are all agreeing that this should be included in the code. Yeah, all right, next.
All right, so. Where's my limitations? Okay, so in this, the red is stuff that you've already approved along, actually, probably before some of you were on the board. The new part is the last, number eight, hotels and motels that are converted to permanently affordable housing developments. Again, that's just the language right out of the statute.
So the yellow language is now required, right?
Yes, yep.
And then at the top, under letter A, you say this was already approved by the PC. Is this, can you let us know which of this is kind of discretionary versus required? So this is about limitations on site plan review, yeah? And the following uses, which are allowed in all districts, are subject to site plan review, but only with respect to, where's that language coming from?
That's from the statute.
It is from the statute. That entire, all that in red is from the statute.
All that with respect to and the whole list, that's.
Location, size, height.
Right out of statute, yeah.
So there's nothing in here that is special to Redding or discretionary, or we're over voting it or underdoing it?
I don't think you have to allow them in all districts, as you do. For example, you have to allow them in some districts. You can't disallow them. I mean, for example, hazardous waste management facilities, I don't think you would have to allow that in your, you know, wildlife habitat district.
So the code before any of these current changes under this grant, it used to be the following uses are allowed in all districts, right?
Subject to site plan review.
Subject to site plan review. But now the subject to site plan review is only with respect to, so what's being left out? What has been cut out?
Well, like, doing a conditional use review would be overkill.
Could be what?
Would be overkill. It'd be going beyond what the statute allows. Which things? I don't, I haven't gone through your bylaws and compared the list, so. I mean, it still does allow quite a bit of things for you to review, it's just that the upshot is you can't say, you can't say no, really, is what they're saying. You can't say, "We don't want this." You can say, "We want you to plant a bunch of trees in front of it," or "We want you to use downcast lighting," or you can apply your noise standards, or things like that. But you can't interfere with the intended functional use, so. So it's not saying you can't regulate them, it's just.
If we're following the state statute, then I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, if that's the required language, then that's the required language. I just, I'm, I'm, it definitely catches my eye that we are adding language that says "but only with respect to." So that sounds like we're limiting something that we, I'm not sure what used to be there, what more we could have done, but.
That is the maximum that you can do, is the things that are listed.
Okay. All right. Anything more to say about that? So that'll go in the code?
Okay. So, I'm gonna go to.
So back to Eve's point, the language "but only with respect to" is the state code or the state language?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of grabs your attention this way.
It grabs, yeah, it does, because when I read it first, I was like, oh, okay, and then I read it again, and now you wasted it, and I'm like, hmm.
It feels like somehow tying your hands, but I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure we will find out.
Yeah.
If, I mean, I can double-check, and I can also send you the statute if you want to see the.
So for now, let's say that if this is required, we're done, and if you could follow up and send that to us, and if we need to revisit it next time, we can.
Okay.
I just have a question.
That's fair.
The bottom part, A, it says that they have to comply with the NFIP and flood hazard unless regulation shall not have the effect of interfering with the intended functional use.
Right.
So that means that they don't have to comply? If it interferes with their use, say, you know, the school building or something, it doesn't have to comply with the flood, you know, the zoning ordinance for the flooding?
If you were applying the flood regulations in such a way that it prevented the school from using the school building as a school?
Right.
You'd probably be in violation.
So it's not intended, it's existing?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, I guess this is, this is for new development, so I'm trying to think of a good example. I mean, I don't know if you have any parcels that are entirely within a flood plain or river corridor. Probably not, so, you know, they could, then if you were building a new church, or a new school, or a new whatever, it could probably comply with the river corridor and the flood regs and whatever other regs you have without preventing it from being a church or a school and.
Okay, then, but the town has no right to say, "You can't do that. You can't put that gymnasium there for the school because it's in a flood hazard." You can't say that.
If you could put it somewhere else outside of the flood, I mean, I don't know what the, I don't think the flood regs, they wanna, generally, they wanna keep people from living in a house that's in the flood plain where they might get swept away and, you know.
But it's.
But usually you can park and do a few other things in flood plain. I imagine you could have a gym or something, maybe.
So historically, there are examples not too far away from Redding.
Yeah.
Where people have built or converted an old building in a designated flood plain, but they have hours of operation, no one can reside there, and they allow it to operate as a commercial entity. But they, you can't sell it for anything other than a commercial entity, can't use it for affordable housing, there's no overnight accommodations. So I think they're discouraging people from building in a flood plain for obvious reasons that we're experiencing, seems like every week now.
Yeah.
But I guess they would allow it.
But, and they're allowing it for hospitals?
A new hospital, they would allow to be built in a flood plain?
It says. I don't know.
I have to go back.
But again, this is language from the state statute, right?
That just caught my eye because it's a little strange.
I'm gonna look it up and send it to you.
Okay.
If it says something different, you know, and you have to adjust it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You can adjust it.
Okay, all right.
Just 'cause flood plains are on my mind a little.
Everyone's mind.
What's the next one?
So the part about 120 days.
The warning.
When I started going through your regulations, you don't have one section where it says that, so I started off by putting it under conditional use and site plan, and I have to still look and see if there's other places where it will need to be inserted with the same basic wording that I put in here. Do I have the right thing up there?
Point two.
Okay. Yeah. So the zoning administrator notifies the zoning board when a, when an application is deemed complete.
By the ZA? Deemed complete by the ZA?
By the ZA. This application has everything that it needs to be passed along to the ZDA that the ZA would notify you. And then there's, within 120 days, you have to warn your public hearing. It doesn't say you have to hold the hearing within that 120 days, but you have to warn it, and that's a new state requirement.
And there didn't used to be a requirement for that, right?
Only if it was an appeal of the ZA's decision, and then there was, I think, a 60-day, you had to hear it within 60 days. And they, the statute was silent on how quickly you had to hear everything else.
So have they had problems with meetings not being warned? I mean, it must be coming out of some issue.
I would assume, I would assume, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's the new rule, and we just have to, more to come from you on all the places it has to be tucked in?
Yes. Sometimes there's a section in the bylaws where this is the procedure for public hearings, but in your bylaws, it's conditional use, PUD, site plan, you know, it's kind of in lots of different places, so rather than reorganize the whole thing, I'd probably just tuck it in wherever it needs to go.
So just to understand the process, so someone applies for a conditional use, they go to the ZA with the application. The ZA then reviews the application, deems it complete, then sends it to the ZDA to schedule a hearing.
Yeah.
Within 120 days of him deeming the, or she deeming the application complete.
So if you don't, I don't know, I think maybe I have a copy of your conditional use application. I know at the very beginning, when I started working with the prior planning commission members, the very first thing they wanted to do was to look at the applications with Bob, and so we went through them. What I don't recall now is whether there is a, you know, for office use only, is there a place where he, like, signs off on it and puts the date?
Yeah, I think so.
And if there isn't, then there should be so that, because that's what starts the clock ticking.
Well, yeah, and then I'm thinking that this, we should suggest that this language be included on that application, so the applicant and the ZA are very clear about the process.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're right, there must have been an issue at some point, otherwise it wouldn't have been put in there.
So we should be taking a look at some point at that application?
Yeah, I made a note.
And then the other thing is interested persons.
Wait, can I ask one more question about this 120 days?
Yes.
So you have to warn it within 120 days. Is there a time limit for between the 120 days and forever when you have to hold it? Do you have to hold it within 120 days after the warning? Could it be next year? Could it be?
Usually you hold a public hearing 15 days after you warn it. I mean, I suppose it could be 20 or 30, I think if you go up.
Is that required?
You're, I'll have to look that up.
And then, so I'm just thinking, stuff takes time, right? We have a hearing right now that has been continued several times because there's flooding all over the state, and we can't address this issue here. If you warn it, and then you have to hold it within a certain number of days, I assume that you could.
You could continue it, like you're doing now, yeah.
And then are there limits on that, or can you just, do you have flexibility to continue it as needed, or are you gonna be constrained by preset timeframes? Is what I'm.
I believe you can continue it as needed.
Martha, can you scroll down to see what, how that follows up on the next page? So there's no set period after the 120 that I see there?
This is the only part that is new, is, and again, like you say, they must have been having an issue with things not getting warned in a timely manner. They probably should have said warned within 120 days and held within 150 or something like that, but it doesn't say that.
So it, 15 days is the absolute limit to when you can warn it. You can do it prior to 15 days.
120 days?
You can go to 120 days. Like, you can warn, say, "Today, we're warning a meeting that's gonna happen in December or October."
I think 15 days is the minimum. You can't do it in less than 15 days.
And you'll check if there's an actual?
Yeah.
Is this the law now? So if we have a hearing in process that may or may not have to be rewarned, is this gonna be in effect for all current issues?
Yours began prior to this law.
So we're just proceeding under the old regime?
We're going.
Right, I mean, you've already warned it anyway, so this wouldn't be relevant.
Okay.
I mean, if you are just gonna drop it and restart completely?
No.
No.
Okay.
We're, we are intending to just continue it.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're doing that with all the bells and whistles, but that's the intent, is to just continue it as information is available.
It was just recessed.
Okay. To a date certain?
No date.
Not to a date certain?
No.
And I think that's, I think that's where your advice came in with the rewarning. If you can't do it specific date, you had to rewarn.
Right.
But the first one, we had a specific date, but I still had to rewarn it.
You didn't, you didn't convene on the first date that you said you were going to, is my understanding?
We did not.
Right.
Right, we ended up not.
That's why you had to rewarn. If you had convened when you said you were going to, opened the hearing, said, "We don't have the information that we requested, we're going to continue it again for another month," then you would not have had to rewarn it.
We couldn't do that, because we have no idea.
Right.
But the May meeting, we had the date for July, but I still had to rewarn it at the May meeting, which was July.
But you didn't, but you didn't meet in May?
Yeah, we met in May.
That was the first hearing.
May was the first hearing.
So.
And then we recessed.
So you have a meeting, you recessed to a specific date?
Yeah.
And you met on that date?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's where your advice, that's where your recommendation and advice. That's where your advice, that's where your recommendation and advice came in, that we, if we don't meet, create another specific date because we couldn't, then we had to rewarn in the future.
Right.
But I learned that we had to rewarn the July meeting, like three days before the date had to be rewarned. You understand, in June is when I heard, oh, you have to rewarn the July meeting. Even though we didn't have the July meeting, has nothing to do with that. I was told by, like, Calista and other people that you don't have to rewarn, I asked Jason also, you don't have to rewarn it because we had the date. So, but at the last minute, I heard that I had to rewarn it, and that was like Saturday and it had to be done Monday, so.
So the key is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, uh, recess, recess to a date certain.
Exactly.
And if you, if it's open-ended, we're gonna recess pending additional information, which we don't know when it's coming.
Then you have to rewarn it.
Then you have to rewarn. So if you're in that set, if you're in that situation now, where we had a date certain, but the information wasn't available, and at the request of the applicant, the meeting wasn't held because of all the flooding and the state couldn't do their piece, is the hundred and eighty, twenty day requirement in play now?
Well, is your application complete? It sounds like it's not.
No. I mean, the application is complete, the information
Needed.
Needed, to make a determination was not complete.
Okay.
I mean, new, so new information came up after the initial hearing day.
If you don't have the information that you need to have the hearing, then the application's not complete. And I, you know, I know you talked a little bit about checklist and...
So if the application appears complete, and you hold a hearing, but then you discover
That it's not.
That there is additional information, say from a state agency, that would be helpful, then you deem it incomplete?
Then you request that and you recess to a date certain. Making that date out far enough that you think you'll be able to get that information.
And then, how I understand the process, you convene, you don't, you still don't have the information, you create, you recess to another specific date.
Right.
If you still don't have that two, three, four months out.
You just keep recessing.
You convene again, recess, new date.
Yeah.
I think technically, that's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah, I did have one in West Windsor that went like eight, eight continuations.
All right, I can move on.
All right, so, uh, for the next round, we hold the meeting, whether or not there is something to determine and set it out again another month if need be. Okay.
Or sixty days. I mean, what you think is reasonable, it doesn't have to be a month, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think, not meaning to talk about that issue here, but just trying to put this overlay onto a live case and see how it works, because it's complicated.
Yeah.
All right. Interested persons?
Yes. So this one is... Wait, am I in the right place? Yes, okay. The definition of an interest, interested person, it basically includes the person who owns the property, the town, a person owning adjoining property, and then it used to say any ten voters, residents, or property owners who by signed petition allege any relief requested, blah, blah, blah. Now it says twenty. That's, they just increased it from ten to twenty. If a group of people in town wants to become an interested party with the right to appeal something, there needs to be twenty of them.
Otherwise
Rather than ten.
Otherwise, they can do it individually.
Sorry.
If they're, if they're
If they're abutters.
Or they have some other, you know.
Right.
Interest.
So you could have, if you're not in town, say you're in a more rural road, you might not have twenty people that fit those conditions. Right?
Well, you would have to lobby twenty others.
Twenty voters, residents, or property owners. It doesn't have to, they don't have to be abutters.
They don't have to be abutters, okay.
Yeah.
So is there a reason, do you know why they changed it from ten to twenty?
Probably to discourage somewhat.
For lack of better words, yes.
Make it a little harder to, you know?
That's how I would read it.
It is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, in a very small town with a hundred residents, it could get pretty difficult, but.
Yeah.
So, I think we knocked them all off except for parking.
Okay. So these will, you will work these all in, and you'll let us know on that one, uh, with the site plan review, about the, whether that language is required or discretionary?
Under the limitations.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Okay, I did not have parking open, I guess. Okay, we went through this last time. I think everyone was pretty much okay with the language, but we didn't have the one eighty-one stuff in there yet, so this yellow.
The yellow is the one eighty-one language.
Is the one eighty-one, and... Trying to see if there was more yellow. Yeah, and the definition of parking space.
So other than the yellow, the red, we've
This is what you discussed last time.
So I think everything in red that's highlighted, we've gone through and agreed to, and the yellow is required, newly required by the homeowner.
Required language. I, I happened to put it here under residential dwellings, because I couldn't really find a better place to put it. If you think of a better place to put it.
Okay.
And then the other thing was just under parking space, the definition, the state has said, and I, I think I went back and looked, it's actually only residential parking spaces, nine by eighteen, but I don't know if you want to have different standards for parking spaces for residential and another measurements for commercial, and then what do you do if you have a mixed-use lot? It just seems to be overly complicated. Might as well stick with nine by eighteen for everything.
Um, so, we asked a few people who have been long, long time reading residents if anyone's ever gotten parking taken. So, the answer is no.
Good to know.
So you can make it whatever you want.
Right, and they're mostly in this town, you know, in most towns, actually, they're not even strict, so. But anyway, that's what the law says is the biggest it can be, unless it's an ADA, you know.
Okay.
So, we're good with?
So in rereading this and reviewing it, under libraries and museums, it says one thousand square feet of floor area. Are we to assume that that's interior floor area? Or do we need to, hmm, open, interior floor area, open to the public?
As opposed to like a porch?
Yeah.
Right, we did use the library, right, as the example. There's four spots and there's like two thousand.
It used to say gross exhibit area.
Right.
It got changed to floor area.
Could floor area be interpreted to mean anything other than interior?
That was my question. I don't know if we need to define it as interior floor area.
I don't think it hurts.
I was inferring interior, but let's, we can put that in. It doesn't hurt. Okay. Are we off?
Good. So then, we are ready for accessory dwelling.
And that was great, um, that you reached out to Bob and got that further clarification on the use of the slot. I think that's good information to have.
So we, you have circulated to us new accessory dwelling unit language.
This...
We have, we've already gone over this, but then now there's still new requirements?
You've gotten, um, okay, so the accessory dwelling unit definition was one that was approved quite a while ago. It was this section four point one that caused a lot of discussion and disagreement, so it was set aside for, you know, six or eight months. And you guys talked about it last time, or maybe you and I talked about it, Eve, I thought we all talked about it last time.
We did, yeah, a little bit.
So the, the pressing, the controversial parts where the owner occupied a lot. The short-term, number five, neither the single-family home nor the accessory dwelling unit is offered as a short-term rental. This number four, the accessory dwelling unit is not located in a special flood hazard area or a river corridor. I think maybe, Eve, that when you and I met, we were, we talked about changing that to say the accessory dwelling unit complies with the special flood hazard area regulations and then reference them.
I think that makes more sense, rather than, rather than try to summarize all that language into that one number four. So it needs to, it's just a point, make sure people are aware of the special flood hazard area, river corridor language, and point them to look at that, not try to say that they can't put it in there, because maybe they can, I don't know.
I don't think so, but might as well.
I would rather, I would rather point to the section that's actually describing what they can and can't do, rather than just say you can't build in it, because they should go through that other analysis, I think.
So maybe we should start at the top on this section.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's just go through the
In accordance with twenty-four VSA, forty-three twelve, one E, an accessory dwelling unit as defined in Article seven of these regulations shall be considered a permitted use in all districts provided that it conforms with all of the following provisions.
Wait, so let's stop there.
Yeah.
Um, this is the, is this the new law that's trying to liberalize the ADU standards? So it, has it always been a permitted use, or is this new that is permitted use?
You have to allow an ADU as a permitted use for, with, someone who has a single-unit dwelling, wants to have an ADU, if it's on an owner-occupied lot, you have to allow it. If it's not on an owner-occupied lot, you don't have to allow it. You can allow it, but you don't have to allow it.
So I think what's really important for me to digest this is, what is the state telling us, and what in this red language, this, this is an opinion, new to reading?
Well, what you, where you have leeways, you can you can allow them on lots that are not owner-occupied. But if someone has an owner-occupied lot, you have to allow it. So you can be more permissive.
Because I'm reading these as being less permissive. In the
Right, this is what the minimum that you have to allow. If you just said, you can just say the accessory dwelling unit is located within or pertinent to a single-unit dwelling, period, and not specify that it's on an owner-occupied lot, you, you are allowed to do that. And that was the big kind of disagreement in earlier conversations.
Well, there's two art, two sides to the argument and everything in between. My perception is, if we do not allow people to buy into renting and create an ADU to possibly offset their expenses owning that property, we're chasing those people away. If renting in other towns become unaffordable because they can't supplement their income to offset some of those expenses. So, any language beyond other than, excuse me, allowing them, I think is restrictive.
However, like, I know what you mean. However, there are places that are, someone from, you just said that you can, if you're buying a lot, we're not chasing anybody away by them purchasing a lot and adding an ADU, that's okay. But I think we want to try to discourage people who are just buying a lot to create an ADU.
Why would we want to discourage that?
Because that's somebody who's just, there's no, they're not part of the community, they're not... If they live here, that's different. If they don't live here and just, like what's been happening, you know, at Ludlow, on Alkima, where out-of-state people are buying up four condos and just renting them out, so, you know, there's some, that is something in the know.
Yeah, I understand, I understand Ludlow, Killington, even Woodstock, I, I understand those arguments, but in renting, I'm not getting it. And I, I, are we having an influx of people buying, and then this is another point that I think is advantageous to, to bring up, is somebody who lives here part-time, and then while they're not living here, they rent it out as a short-term rental. And those people could be part of the community when they're here.
Right.
And then they're just offsetting their expenses by having it as a short-term rental while they're not here.
So that's a different thing, too.
So if this is written right now, like on the screen right now, uh, if I am an owner, so I'm a full-time owner, and I have an ADU, is it saying that I can't offer my ADU as a short-term rental?
Yes.
That you can't?
And number five.
Oh, yes, number five is, yeah.
That seems too much. So, you know, finding the, finding the balance between people being able to supplement their income appropriately and fairly versus having, uh, an investor buy properties that interfere with housing stock for a local people, I think that's the trick. But certainly, number five, the way it's written right now, is too much. If someone has an ADU and they want to use it as people are already doing to supplement their income, it seems too much to tell them that they can't.
And adding to the trick, there are people, not in renting that I'm aware of, but in, you know, cities south or towns south, towns north of us, who are living in, let's say, Killington, just for, you know, conversation purposes, they live there full-time, but they also have bought ten units. So do we want to discourage that?
I think we need to find a balance between it.
So right now, I'm, I'm really looking at number five. I think that's the only piece here that is discretionary and
Well, number one is also Well, number one is also discretionary. You can allow them, you don't have to specify that it's on an owner occupied lot.
Oh. So if you have a part-timer, that person does not have, and that person wants to have an ADU, that's not a permitted use?
It's like if they're from Massachusetts, they buy a house, they're not here full-time, they're not a resident, they create an apartment over their garage, barn, whatever, what we're saying is it's not permitted in number one.
Maybe can we talk about...
It seems restrictive.
Well, can we talk about maybe the reasons why it might be permitted or might not be permitted? Like, what are the reasons? Why is it even an issue?
Well, I think the, the issue comes from managing the tenants. And I think where things get routed is on properties where there's not an owner affiliation immediately accessible to that property. Somebody comes, they reserve for ten people, they end up having a party for a hundred people, and it gets crazy, the town gets involved in all that. I don't know of anything like that happening in Reading.
You're...
But I think in other, other instances around the country, the world, that, that's happening a lot. So we're trying to incorporate something that's not happening in Reading into Reading.
Maybe you want that ADU for your caretaker?
Yeah, absolutely.
To take care of your property while you're not there.
Yeah, but are you charging rent to your caretaker?
In some cases, yes.
Sometimes.
Right, fine, I'm just, okay, so I'm, I'm thinking still about the other thing. Like, who is responsible then for, if something goes wrong, if there's a fire?
Ultimately, the owner.
I'm not sure it would be any different if it's a short term rental versus a long term rental for that case. I mean, there's, there's the party noise issue, for sure. You know, I know if you go into some of the cities, there's disposal of trash, and that's the big one. Disposal, disposal of trash, they just put it out when they leave. That's not the issue here. Me personally, I don't think it makes sense to restrict part-time owners from having an ADU be permitted versus a full-time owner. I feel like that sets up an unfair dichotomy.
And a potential challenge.
That's just, that's my opinion.
So also then, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, because I've been reading all the Woodstock stuff. Do ADUs take away housing from, you know, since there's a housing shortage? Does that take away from housing?
I don't think ADUs per se take away, they actually are meant to, that's why they're allowed on owner occupied lots, because they're meant to grow the housing stock. That's why the, the state said if you live, if you have a single family home, you live there, you can have an ADU.
Okay, so maybe I'm talking about the short term rentals.
Right.
Does that inhibit the housing stock? Does it?
Short term rentals probably do.
You know, to some extent, if it's being rented short term, it's not being rented long term.
Well, however, I did, I've been following this thing in Woodstock closely.
The votes, like?
I know. And it just seems like whoever is speaking says, nobody could live in my ADU, in my short term rental. It's just for like a weekend thing. So I, I don't know. I mean, it, it seems to be like it's...
No one can live in my short term rental, you mean, it couldn't be a long term rental because of the lack of facilities?
Right, it's, right, exactly.
Which is a good point, because it could, the ADU could have a kitchenette and not a full-out kitchen.
But some could and some couldn't.
Right, yeah.
So how do you determine that?
I mean, there's good arguments on both sides, you know. Some people can't afford to buy a house unless they put an ADU over the garage to help earn money to pay for the mortgage. So it can help with homeownership. It can also, if it's rented out short term instead of long term, it can impact the housing market. I mean, if this, so there's pros and cons. And I mean, a lot of towns have found, who started off putting something about short term rentals in their zoning, have switched to putting it as a separate ordinance. For, for one thing, a lot of the issues that come up with short term rentals, which are like noise and too many people or trash and things like that, when you're enforcing your zoning regulations, you have to send a letter giving them seven days notice to cure the issue. I mean, the issue's over by then, so...
Well, and I think we're getting, we're getting derailed here. We're talking about ADUs, we're not talking about short term rentals.
Right, but if you want to ditch this number five, you know, what you, and I, it's my understanding that the former planning commission had given the select board a short term rental ordinance. I mean, you can always, when you're done with this, pull it out, look at it, see, you know, if you want to do something with that.
So I'm, I'm with you on the owner occupied. I, I think that's too restrictive. And then number five, I would recommend it go away.
And number one, I think if you're the homeowner, whether or not that's your full-time residence or your part-time residence, if, if it's allowed to, if a full-timer is allowed to have an ADU, I think only, it's only parity to have anybody have the ability to have an ADU. And an ADU should be a good thing. That will provide somebody housing, so it's either going to be housing or it's going to be someone who's coming in for vacation and hopefully bringing some discretionary spending with them.
Well, and considering the tax base, that ADU should
Increase the tax value.
Increase our tax space, property tax space.
So, so limiting the ability of one person to have an ADU when another person is allowed to have an ADU, to me, doesn't make sense. So I guess I would, I fall on the side of striking the owner occupied lot requirement of number one.
I agree.
And on number five, I think it's really complicated. You know, again, me personally, I have no problem with ADUs being offered for short term rentals. Whether the single family home is, that's, that gets a little closer for me. But it's not up to me. It's, it's a town issue, although tucking it into the zoning code may not be the most reasonable thing, as you described, because then it's a zoning violation as opposed to a... And maybe it's the kind of thing that the town needs to decide for itself. I can imagine Reading attracting, we're not that far from Okemo, we're not that far from desirable things. Certainly, we have GMHA just up the road. You know, the Manascutney recreation area is getting hotter. Could we be a desirable place for a lot of short term rentals that would interfere with the local housing market? I think we probably could.
Eventually, possibly.
Today, maybe not so much, but eventually. But I don't know that this is the right way to handle that. So maybe one of these days, we're having the vote on whether or not to have them.
So then if we eliminate on over, on owner occupied lot, then number three, the owner of the property may have, that, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, if you want to live in that little, little ADU at the back, go for it.
It doesn't matter.
I mean, I, I can imagine saying the single family home will not be offered as a short term rental. But I'm not sure we're in that place right now. I, I'm not sure we're prepared, I'm not sure I'm prepared to make that recommendation yet.
And we're not speaking of a single family home, we're speaking of ADUs?
Yes. So that's a big point, because that is rolling in single family homes in that area.
Can we revisit this?
Can we what?
Revisit part of this?
Which part?
Like the things that we have a little bit of issues with.
To think about again later? Or to think about doing like an STR ordinance?
Something like that. Like, I'm really curious about what's going to happen in Woodstock. I want to see what, not that more Woodstock, I just want to listen to all the sides that, you know, get all the information about that.
Well, the STR subject is a very big, complicated, widespread issue. And every town is a unique animal.
New York City, they are.
Yeah, so I, I, I think you're right, that needs to be another subject. And I, I, unless there's specific language you would like to introduce here regarding specifically ADUs, I don't think we should have to revisit this section, if we agree to move past it.
Well, can we strike it from here and then just look at it somewhere else and look at different language?
Well, the, the only other thing I would say about short term rentals is that at the beginning of your regulations, you have something that says, anything that's not permitted or exempt is prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a conflict that we talked about before.
If your short term rentals, if you're silent on short term rentals completely,
Yeah.
they're prohibited, because they're not permitted and they're not exempt.
Well, they're out there.
I know.
And so what are you saying? We need to revisit that and revise that language?
I'm just saying that technically, right now, they're prohibited with your existing language.
So it says that, they're happening, so do we need to go back and revisit that language?
I mean, technically, your zoning administrator should be enforcing against them.
Yeah, I don't...
I'm not prepared to change it to say STRs are allowed in Reading, but nor do I want to say they're not. I sort of feel like, I don't know.
That's how I feel.
I mean, for now, for the ADU section, you could, you could cross out the owner occupied lot, you could cross out number five. I've made a note to add the language about complying with the special flood hazard section, and...
Well, that's important. Number three, I think, is, needs to be, if we're not speaking of owner occupied, I think number three needs to go away too. Not that it's any of our business where someone lives on their property.
Right. Right, because if you have a house that has apartments in it, you may want to live in the left-hand corner.
The studio.
Yeah, like, rather than, you know, in...
You downsize.
It's just clarifying that you can live in either one.
Right.
I, I'm okay with number three. I mean, it sort of seems obvious, so I, it doesn't bother me. Wow, this is tough. I, I, I am not comfortable including number five at this point. And if Reading feels that it needs an STR ordinance, I think that is beyond the scope of this conversation.
I agree.
That would be my position.
So you said as of now, they're prohibited?
I mean, they're not explicitly prohibited, it's just by not being mentioned at all, they're not permitted, they're not exempt.
Right, okay.
So anything not mentioned is theoretically prohibited?
I say we leave it for now. I mean, they're there anyway, so...
I think we leave it for now. Maybe this is something that Reading should hold. Maybe the select board should consider, or the planning board should consider holding a public meeting to discuss, or bringing it to a vote, or something. But this seems like a bigger issue than just us putting in can or can't in the code.
I agree.
So I'll cross out owner occupied law.
I mean, it's not a perfect answer, I'm aware. But it, it is a big decision to make, more than the three of us and our two audience members and our one online person.
And I'm sure you don't like it.
Well, you're, you're always welcome to ask, if you recognize, but I think you're covered now.
Talk during the public comment.
I'm just going to make...
So I, I, I think at this point, we are deferring this decision to...
So we're getting rid of an owner occupied lot on one. We're going to leave number three, because that, whatever, and then number five is we're getting rid of?
I think so.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that?
For now, yeah.
So it's...
And I think from a safety perspective, you go down to four-one-C and fire safety.
Yeah.
In the, the recent legislation, they, it was the three percent increase in, in STR tax and then fire safety recommendations. I think those were the two key elements of that regarding STR.
In any STR has to have fire safety.
But that, that goes for if you're, if you're creating an ADU that you rent out long term, you have to get the same...
Right, I mean, a rental is a rental, whether it's long or short term, yeah.
Um, can we talk about this very important issue of whether or not to call them single family dwellings, single unit dwellings, single household dwellings?
So these days, the...
The state is calling them single family dwellings still, yes?
In some cases, in, when they write new legislation, I think they're trying to write single unit dwelling. I don't know, trying to be less, you know, I guess discriminatory by calling it family, because how you define family is, you know...
No, that's a good point. I didn't even think of that.
So, single unit or single household, just to be...
If we change it to be inclusive, which is fine. I, I just want to make sure we're going to have different terms in the rest of our code. So if we, I feel like we must have the word single family.
You can just change it throughout, make it single unit throughout or single household throughout?
I kind of prefer single household myself, but single unit sounds like it's creating a new thing, like that doesn't, I don't know, what do you?
I feel like household, though.
Yeah, I like household, too.
Single household? And can we, can we check it throughout?
Yeah. So we're done with ADU for now?
I think we are done with ADUs.
And hopefully, we're going to...
For now. Subdivisions.
Subdivisions.
We have gone through, as a reminder, lot line revisions, minor subdivisions. I think we went, have we been through major subdivisions?
No, I think we've just maybe started.
Just started, okay.
Like glance.
So Martha, first of all, thank you. You have done a lot of work on this section, trying to re, reconstruct it and make it more logical, and it's a lot of work. And I think it's, I think it's pretty much there in terms of its structure. Are there any discretionary pieces? Happily, the major subdivision section.
So one thing we didn't talk about last time, under five point six point two lot line adjustments, the application requirements, says a survey plat that meets the requirements of section five point three point five point one, and I sent that to you. Let me pull that up. This is going to be, jump back and forth. No, maybe I didn't open that section yet.
So she's pulling that up. Can I take us back to the beginning, under applicability, number one? I thought we removed, we, we agreed to remove that no land clearing activities designed as pre-development site preparation are subject to site plan review under section five three three six.
We changed... We, um, changed something.
I think, I think it, I think land clearing activities, well, I don't, let me let Martha address that. They're in the very front of the, so you think that's a new requirement?
It was somewhere else and I'm...
We had the discussion of, of, you know, when you're, you're thinking about developing a piece of property, you have to do a certain amount of clearing to see if it's even feasible. Whether there's a ledge in your way, you have to blast, it may come to cost prohibitive. So I know we had discussed, and maybe it was in another section and we're just carrying it forward somehow and didn't realize it here?
So I think it's under the very beginning of our code. A zoning permit is required for any land development defined in state law, except for development specifically exempted from these regs under section 5.1.2. And then land development is defined as division of a parcel, construction, reconstruction, conversion, alteration, enlargement of a building, mining, excavation, landfill, any change in the use of any building or structure or land or extension or use of the land. Now, that's not it. Where was that, Martha?
Hang on, I got lost.
There either was language or there was proposed language to, that spoke of clearing and, and we had a conversation about it, and I thought we had eliminated it.
Yeah, no, I know, I know what you're talking about, I'm just lost, I guess I'm just lost in my documents here. Oh, there it is. Now, Reading. Subdivision. Okay, way back, okay, we're back. So approval required, it's 5.6.1, number one. Any proposed subdivision of land requires a zoning permit and is subject to approval in accordance with the standards and procedures set forth in this section before any land development, as defined in Article 7, may commence. That's where it said a bunch of other things, grading and various other things. We just substituted land development. This other thing, note that land clearing activities designed as pre-development site preparation are subject to site plan review under section 5.3.3.6. This was down, I think, near the major subdivision section. And it just seemed out of place.
Uh-huh.
So I moved it here.
So the yellow in this document is?
From a different section of the subdivision?
So it's not a state requirement?
No, it's just something that was in the regulations already.
It's the existing code.
That I moved to a place that seemed more appropriate.
Can you point to where it was?
Um, maybe. Yes, it was under major subdivisions, number two, review procedures.
Oh, yeah, got it.
It seemed like an odd place for it, so.
So you just?
I just took that.
You just took it and moved it up?
To, up to the beginning.
Okay.
So that was or is in our existing code? And then we had a discussion to eliminate it?
No.
And then we moved it?
No.
I...
The first sentence where it says, so the first sentence in 5.6.1, number one, approval required, where it says before any land development, it used to say before any grading, clearing, something else, or land development, and you've got rid of everything except land development.
Because that's already defined.
Because grading and clearing are already defined, under the definition of land development.
So we should probably capitalize land development, since it's a defined term. Because if you go to Article 7, we have land development, which says all those things.
And I don't really wanna set something in motion that gets somebody in trouble because they're clearing some trees to explore what they can and cannot do with their property before they decide on land development.
I don't think this is new. I think this is just consolidating.
It's not new and I think it's probably, I, I, I can research where it is. I think it also is in another section. So if you, um, if you, it, it might be one of those things that's, you know, Eve, you like to point to things?
I do like to point to things.
If it is in another section, well, it does, it says under 5.3.3.6. Oh, no, that's just the site plan review section, no, no. If somewhere else it says that pre-development site planning is, requires site plan review, and this is just telling people that here so they don't miss it, if you wanted to eliminate, you'd have to make sure that you're finding it in the other places.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna eliminate anything that we've already got. That's, seems like a bigger, a bigger thought process, um, and it hasn't...
It hasn't popped up as an issue.
It what?
It hasn't popped up as an issue.
It hasn't been a problem, but we know.
And I would think that exploratory is pre-predevelopment.
Well, that's another, yeah.
It's not like you decided on the spot and you started. So it shouldn't have been an issue, right?
I think it's okay.
Okay.
All right, what's next?
So you did talk about the public road dividing, and the way it was worded, I think you were fine with? Just, it's very clear so that you don't get into a legal situation, um.
Yeah.
So...
That seems clear and seems to summarize our conversation.
So where I was going was the lot line adjustment application references the requirements of section 5.3.5.1. And I wanted to share that section with you, hopefully. Let me stop sharing this one. Uh, where'd it go? Is that it? I got it up there? Oh, good.
5.3.5 requirements?
Yes. So the red is what was not in there already. And it seems like logical stuff to have on a site plan.
Sounds good.
I, I don't see anything controversial in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes it seem a little more, uh, rather than some of the drawings I've seen.
Oh, I think it's essential going forward. These plans, I, some of the drawings I've seen, it's like the oak tree next to the big rock, you know, and you look at it, it's like the oak trees are no longer there, the big rock was moved, you know? So, yeah, I, I think this is good language.
Or the string used to be before Irene.
Yeah, or where the string now is.
It's gonna be somewhere else next week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Subdivision again. So we got through minor... Oh, the other thing that was, you know, what's a subdivision plan, was the question I looked at. A lot of other regulations, a lot of them use that term, most of them, I couldn't find any that define it. So I created a definition, which I sent you. Um, so where it says...
Are you speaking of the subdivision plan? Is that that document?
Right, under minor subdivision, the application requirements, it says a subdivision plan and survey plat. And we're, we, we discussed, well, what is a subdivision plan?
Okay, so that's where we're going from that point in minor subdivisions to this document here that you said you sent as a separate attachment?
Yes, I sent a separate attachment with a proposed definition for a subdivision plan. I'm just trying to go through so we don't leave too many loose ends.
So the, the, so the document that you sent that says a subdivision plan consists of, that's a new definition?
That's a proposal since...
To put in the definitions section?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, I was wondering where that was, because I saw the document, it's like, where does this play in?
So Article 7, definitions.
That's a suggestion. And again, I just created this kind of out of whole cloth because we were talking about, well, what is that? And...
Should we talk about that document?
It's up to you, if you wanna talk about it now or come back to it. I just wanted to point out why, why I sent it.
I'm okay talking about it. I don't know that there's a lot controversial in here, so let's run through it quickly.
Well, yeah, let's run through it quickly.
If we can do it quickly, then good, and if not, then we can...
Yeah, local state highway access, no-brainer, has to happen. Other local federal requirements, yes. Existing covenants or deed restrictions, absolutely. Engineering reports, I'm not too comfortable with that. Traffic studies, not too comfortable. Environmental or visual impact analysis, I'm not comfortable with. And then where you go into homeowners association, so that would only apply to someone who's subdividing with a HOA agreement. So that's kind of a, isn't that a separate discussion? And then a performance bond or a surety bond, I'm, I'm not sure that would apply. Yes to the Vermont Fish and Wildlife, and then plans for landscaping, stormwater, erosion control, grading, lighting, that's, I don't know, that's, that's involved.
So these say where applicable, in case someone comes at you with a 50-lot subdivision that's gonna have sidewalks and stormwater and, you know, whatever. I mean, you never know, it probably won't happen, but if it did, then you would have, you could say, okay, well, in this situation, we really need a homeowners association so the town doesn't get stuck paying for your stormwater maintenance. You know, we want you guys to pay for your tax collection and your stormwater maintenance and whatever else. Your road, if they're not public roads, we want to know that you're...
And I believe we already have HOA language in our current bylaws.
In your zoning?
Yeah, I believe so, because there, there was an issue in the 70s specifically about an HOA, and they put in new regs post that.
You may have it for a planned unit development, which is a little bit of a different animal than subdivision. They, they allow you to, um, create sort of specific regulations for a particular development. But it's very involved.
So this is all prefaced with, a subdivision plan is a written description of the subdivision proposal, and that's not gonna apply to every subdivision, right?
Well, it could apply to every major subdivision.
I mean, it could be as simple as we're, we're taking these 10 acres and dividing them into two five-acre lots, you know.
So which may include, together with any other information, which may include one or more of the following where applicable. So there's a lot of room for the zoning board to, so the planning board to say, you're fine, just tell us.
Or there's a lot of room for them to say no.
To really stick it to someone. It's a lot of discretion.
I mean, are you, are you, I mean, can you, I don't know. I can't envision a zoning board telling someone with a two-lot subdivision that they need a homeowners association.
Well, I can't either, but if you put it in there, you give someone that, that...
It could happen.
Well, maybe what you wanna do then is say, for minor subdivision, minor, you need, you need the highway access. If there are other local, state, federal permits required, you need those.
I think that's probably true. I think, I think it's, I mean, on the one hand, if this were handled with good common sense and fairly, it would be no big deal.
Right.
But it has the potential to be, uh, to create a lot of work, um, depending on who's experiencing it.
Yeah, so...
So it wasn't a quick and easy one?
Do you wanna leave it for, this would apply for major subdivisions only? Or subdivisions with more than 10 lots, or, I mean, I don't know. I think you do wanna keep the ability to request these things for something that's very big.
I think we probably do. I think we need to think about this more and...
Yeah, what triggers?
What, what's gonna trigger this?
We wanna make it simple, so people wanna build more houses to increase our tax base for the town and the state. So if somebody, a big developer comes along from wherever and they buy 500 acres and they wanna build 20 homes on it, then I think a lot of this would apply to that, that individual or that entity. But then we have to define where, where does that go, you know, where, where do we trigger that?
Yeah.
Because these are really serious, engineering reports, traffic study, all those are very, very involved and very, very expensive.
Right, I mean, the first two or three, you're gonna want...
Those are easy.
For anything.
Even the comments from BT Fish and Wildlife, that there's an overlay in place for them and, you know, it's like we had to do with our Bailey's Mills property, we had to get them to sign off on, you know, the vernal pond and the deer overlay and... And then that falls into Act 250, so then the jurisdiction, you know, we're, are we trying to be Act 250 or do we just send that to the Act 250 people?
I, I think we should set this one aside for now. So it's, it's, this is a part, this is sort of a small part of our big subdivision, uh, section. And it's really just a definition of what we think a subdivision plan should include, right?
Right, and it, well, it doesn't have to be his definition, I guess you could say a subdivision plan should include, or for a minor subdivision, it should include X, Y, and Z. For a major subdivision, it should also include blah, blah, blah.
And that can easily, easily be like preemptive with the application process. You know, like the little checklist we keep talking about, you know?
Yeah.
Do you have a, and I think in, the application does have some of these, if not, you know, are there existing covenants and deeds? I don't know if it asks that question. But you need other local, state, and federal permits, I believe it does. And you need a driveway, an access permit before you can... And you need a driveway, an access permit before you can go anywhere with the whole thing of course.
Okay, so, put that one on hold. We did talk about the, um, five and 10 year period, and I don't think you made a decision on that.
Uh, is that for?
This is still under minor, the lot or parcel to be subdivided was not created by a subdivision permit within the 10 year period immediately preceding the date on which the application is submitted. And you talked about, eh, maybe it should be five, maybe it should be 10, I think you wanted to think about it. I don't know.
I could argue that either way. Five years could be too short, people could subdivide, wait five years, subdivide more, wait five years, sort of get around the process. 10 years could be a little onerous.
Seven and a half?
There's a number that just rolls right off. I don't know, what, what do you all think?
And I, and I do think, and I mentioned this before, Act 250 can be triggered by multiple subdivisions within a six year period, so if you, and I, I, I should have looked this up. I think it's five or six parcels within a six year period.
Were you gonna check that?
Five, five, um, five? It depends on whether you're a one year, one, one acre district or 10 acre district, I think, but I think it's five parcels within a five year period within five miles, something like that. But the thing is that, um, there was that, I mean, Act 181 made enormous changes to Act 250. So, how exactly that's gonna come into play is really.
So, we don't know, that's up in the air?
Yeah. Basically, I think within villages and downtowns, Act 250 in many cases isn't gonna apply. But then, and then in the middle zone, it'll probably apply the way it applies now, and then in very sensitive areas, it's gonna get more strict than it is now, so.
Do you have a sense of whether five years or 10 years is more the standard? For serial subdivisions?
I think five is more in line with Act 250. What, what other towns do? I don't know, I think, you know, both.
Both.
Well, if you do, if you do five and you trigger Act 250, then that puts you as a developer into a whole different category, and the town doesn't really have a say.
I mean, if you, Redding doesn't have water or sewer, public water or public sewer. The new language also says soils that can accommodate septic systems. Part of your village has decent soils. So, presumably, perhaps someone could come in and say, I'm gonna put in a, a community septic system for, you know, 15 homes on this.
So, like, something like the greenhouse, somebody could come in, theoretically buy that and create a subdivision with a shared septic, shared water source.
You've got good soils, you know, this dark green. So, on one of these bigger lots, maybe someone could come and say, I'm going to put 15 homes here or 20. Over here, it's pretty poor soil, so, I mean, over there, I guess, but, you know, there's a river in there somewhere too, so.
Well, five years is, um, more pro development. Uh, 10 years is more protective of kind of the rural character of the town. Which are we trying, trying to encourage? I think your original language, Martha, was five, and then we were talking about whether it should be longer. You know, in terms of being protective of the rural environment. Making it harder for someone to skirt around any rules by having it be a minor subdivision rather than a major, and then do it again in five years, and do it again in five years. I, maybe that's not that big a concern, I don't know. It's hard to define whether or not that would happen for me.
Yeah, and that's the question with a lot of this is.
What's usual? Is five years the usual?
Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure five years is what Act 250 says now, but, you know, it's, it's all Act 250 stuff is up in the air.
More restrictive.
Right.
I'm okay with five.
You're okay with five?
Five years.
I mean, I, I think for a developer to have to wait five years, doesn't seem like that's something they would find very lucrative, right?
Well, they wouldn't have to wait for five years.
It would, it would just be if they were trying to use the minor subdivision
Well, that's what I mean.
Process to kind of not have to go through the major subdivision process.
Right, that's what I mean.
I can get comfortable with five.
Yeah.
Phew. Okay. What else, Martha?
We were talking, starting to talk about the ridgeline protection overlay district because I said I looked at that district again. It's really talking about the, how high, uh, like the roof of a building is relative to the nearby ridgeline and whether it's visible from a public road, and none of that really seems to apply to subdivisions. Once you have the lots and you're developing the lots, then it would apply.
That's fine, I was only thinking about if you had, um, so say I have a lot that goes all the way up to the ridge, and I want to subdivide the top portion, top 50 feet, which wouldn't be developable, I think. And then keep the bottom 50 feet, should we be looking at the ridgeline district in connection with subdivisions? I could be persuaded that that is too much and someone would have to do their due diligence and know where they could and couldn't build. And if I want to subdivide off the top and make that a different parcel for whatever reason, maybe it's buildable, maybe it's not. You don't have to guarantee that it's buildable if you subdivide, right? Maybe it's subdividing for conservation.
No, no, you don't have to guarantee that it's buildable, you have to disclose in your seller's disclosure that that is a condition of purchase. I happen to own a property that's in the ridgeline protection area, and there are parts of it that you could build without needing a variance to build up higher. I'm not quite sure where this, this protection came from, because the way it was described to me years ago was someone bought on the side of the hill, built a house, and then cleared the side of the hill and put up a bunch of bright lights, and then all of a sudden there was ridgeline protection. Because you could see it driving down at night from 106. So, then boom, we have ridgeline protection.
But that wouldn't, again, that doesn't happen, it's not the lot, it's when you're developing the lot.
Right.
I, I, so I was just working it through my head, I'm fine taking that out.
Right, okay.
My down was my flag, so I, I retract.
And so then, under major subdivision, it would just say subdivision in Swahatch?
Swahatch.
Or special flood or river.
So, taking out the ridgeline, the RPO?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I, I don't, yeah, I think I had this in there last time. An, an amendment to a previously approved subdivision would also, is part of the definition of what a major subdivision is, so. And then we talked about that chart of keeping track of when something's developed in the significant wildlife habitat overlay district. So, this is alternative language.
Are you talking about the yellow language?
The yellow, yeah, to note it on this plat and in the deed.
Okay, so let me just give a little background reminder, the old language, if you were developing in the significant wildlife habitat overlay district, there was a reference to a chart that was showing where you could put things or where you have for things, where you shouldn't put them. Um, the chart doesn't exist, it, it's not been done, so the chart has never been created. But in talking to Martha and thinking this through, it doesn't make sense to have a extra chart floating around out there that the volunteers who sit on this board are somehow gonna have to keep track of.
I've seen the chart.
No, I think you're, you're thinking of the diagram. Like favorable, not favorable.
So, it would be like a record of subdivisions that have occurred in the wildlife area. So, we were trying to come up with an idea to, um, if there is a subdivision in a wildlife area, put it right on the plat when it gets recorded so that it is, um, flowing with that land and that subdivision.
Right, this particular lot, the large lot in the special wildlife habitat overlay district cannot be further subdivided.
So, where do we determine what the large lot is?
So, if you go to the section 2.4.9, it describes alternative types of subdivision that you can do in that district, which is by and large, a 25 acre district, so the description's pretty good.
So, we're only, we're only concerned with the significant wildlife habitat overlay with this clause? We're not, we're not picking parcels out that are, someone chooses to say it's a large lot and then
No.
there's restrictions over.
It's not, it's not size, it's just if it's in this overlay district.
Specifically to significant wildlife habitat.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It has to be in or partially in the wildlife district.
And again, you have to get, if you are going to develop within that district, you have to get permission or a, a letter of, I forget what they call it, a recommendation or approval or. And in some cases, you need to get an engineer vote.
Yeah, that is the one I believe that specifically says you have to get someone from Fish and Wildlife to say, yeah, it'd be okay to put a house here, you shouldn't put it there, you know.
And that's what that diagram you're referencing, Jim. Which I think is helpful, that diagram. So, I guess maximum density, if the application is approved based on the maximum, maximum density standard. And that's defined, I, I have to look at that.
If, yeah, if you read that section, instead of saying a minimum lot size of 25 acres, then a 100 acre lot could be divided into four lots.
25 acre lots.
But they don't have to be 25 acres. They could be five, five, 10, and 80.
Even though you're in a 25 acre?
Yes. If, if making them smaller allows you to stay out of the area where there's, you know, an endangered species or something like that. And that's why you have to tag that larger lot that's remainder to say this can't be subdivided anymore, because you've already taken this 100 acre parcel and divided it into four lots. They're just not all four 25 acre lots. But it's the same density either way.
I think this makes sense. Cause it, in that section 2.4.9, it says to provide development flexibility, subdivisions in the wildlife travel corridor are subject to a maximum density standard rather than a minimum lot size that applies to the rest of the town. And then they have those charts that show, rather than 25, 25, 25, you can do 85, 555, or other configurations. That's the wildlife travel corridor.
Yeah, somewhere it says, I'm pretty sure, I was wondering about that too. The wildlife habitat overlay district consists of the wildlife travel corridor and the deer wintering area combined. That is your special wildlife habitat overlay district.
Good.
So, if you have a 100 acre parcel and you decide to do two 25s and a 10, and you have, so the wildlife habitat, where does that stay? Can it be divided between the different lots or, and then that's just outlined in the deed that you, you know, like our vernal pond, we can't do anything within 50 feet of our vernal pond. Um, so they made us put up signs and everything, you know, frog areas, stay away. And so, does that, I, I'm trying to figure out where that, the balance of that land remains when you do that subdivision.
So, you said 25, 25, 10, and 40?
Well, whatever, the 25, 10, and 10 would be, what, 45, so you'd have 55 acres left over.
Then you would say with the 55 acre lot, can't be further subdivided, even though.
It remains as one lot with, which could be developed.
It can be developed, it just can't be subdivided.
And it can't go, okay. I, I think that's, that's good clarity for everyone in the discussion.
And then this puts it right onto the survey plat and the deed rather than relying on some chart
Yeah.
that might or might not be passed down. Okay.
So, in my scenario, the 55 acre would be the large lot.
That would be the large one, and, and they use that terminology in section 2.4.9, so. So, I'm gonna take out the ridgeline protection one also.
Yeah, I mean, I feel regretful if we had a bad subdivision issue in the ridgeline protection area, but I can't think of what it is right now.
So, then the review procedures.
So, the, under the review procedures, it just seems, I don't know, it seems very subjective to me.
Which part?
To guide the community, um, what is it, E review procedures, um, for A, C, D, E, it's, it's inset. So, it says, survey plats by the planning commission is intended to guide community settlement patterns. So, how do we determine what those settlement patterns are? And how do we guide that?
It's, it's kind of more of a purpose.
I feel like that.
Purpose statement.
You didn't make that language up, wasn't that moved from somewhere?
I think it was moved.
I think that was in there already. Uh, it, it's appearing as underlined because it got added there, but I, I feel like, I could be wrong, but I feel like it was in there.
Yeah, it was in there somewhere, and it was, it didn't seem like a, again, it seemed like an odd place wherever it was.
That's my only, that's my only concern out of that, because if you go on to ensure the, you know, efficient extension of services, utilities, facilities, land is developed. It's just that guide community settlement patterns. I mean, maybe it is in there, and I, I just, it stood out.
Yeah, I mean, in general, that's why you have subdivision regulations, so that you can ask questions like, oh, you wanna put 50 homes in, are there, is there enough room in the school system for 50 more kids or 100 more kids or, you know, it's, and what's, you know, with, I mean, in a town that had water and sewers, like, are we gonna extend the sewer system out there? What are you doing with your stormwater and, these are all things that do come up.
Yeah.
Keep the settlements out of your vernal pond. I, I can't find it quickly, but I feel like that was taken from something else.
It was from somewhere else and...
I don't, that wasn't anything I got made up in this process, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know if I can find it easily either. It may have been down here under, I don't know. But I mean, that sentence in itself isn't really, it's really just a purpose statement, it's not imposing anything on anyone, anything specific. So then, are you okay with the, "An application for major subdivisions shall be reviewed for compliance with the design standards in section 5.6.5"? It's just kind of a...
Well, I think when you get to major subdivisions, they kind of, each one of them's going to take on a life of its own, and if we're being open-minded and, and less restrictive, we're going to look at topography and we're going to look at irregular shapes based on, you know, driveways and stone walls and ledge, and that's just gonna be part of the process.
And then on number three, you can waive or modify any, any or all improvements or requirements if, basically if you don't feel like they're relevant to the particular plot or subdivision.
Okay. Just a quick time check, it's about eight of nine. We should think about what we want our, our seven of nine, what we want our goal to be to get through with this.
From that point on, did we have any concerns?
Well, we kept, I think we kept stopping at the design standards themselves.
Well, in there, I, I mean, I looked at the design standards, I, there wasn't a lot that I thought caught my eye for much of anything. So me personally?
Well, one sounds good, two, I don't see anything that...
I mean, these are the existing standards.
Yeah, I don't...
And they haven't caused any issues that we know of, or no one's complaining about them. Martha, you and I had talked about whether or not we should have a tangible driveway gradient that is fixed rather than just the fire chief saying it's fine. I actually had looked in Vermont and I was not able to find a, you know, driveways shall be no more than 15% or anything like that.
Sometimes do.
But I didn't see any like state standard or, it seemed to be pretty wide, some, it seemed to go between 11% and 20%.
The B-71 standards apply within the highway right of way?
Yep.
I mean, most towns, I think, have that B-71 standard, which is, like, I think it's 3% from the road up a certain number of feet.
Well, that's part of your driveway permit.
Right, right. And then beyond that, some towns have standards. The idea is usually, you wanna be able to get a fire truck up there, you wanna be able to get an ambulance up there.
And that it can turn around. That's...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so this has that it's a, a letting, a letter from the fire department confirming that it provides sufficient access. And we had talked about whether it needs to be more, more objective than that. I'm comfortable with the letter from the Redding Fire Department.
I mean, if, I just think that should apply to both minor and major, the, at least the access being that, that someone says it's not too steep to get an emergency services up there.
But then that also can, I mean, just playing devil's advocate, that could be, a bad storm could create an impassable situation. Someone not plowing their driveway or someone not having put enough sand on it, you know, there's, there's so many variables.
Well, so in, in terms of the...
If they can get up there under normal conditions.
Normal conditions.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a flood and the driveway got washed down and you can't get up there, I mean, I...
That's a good point, too.
In terms of the design standards, the only ones that, in terms of whether they should be major or minor or lot line, it seemed to me like these all used to, these used to apply to all subdivisions, and now we've created these two lesser categories of a lot line and the minor. It seems, these seem relevant for the ZA to consider these issues as well, except for schools and HOAs. So if, if we're doing a minor subdivision or a lot line adjustment, which could be a big lot line adjustment, I don't know that we would wanna exempt these considerations from the ZA thinking about it. The ZA should be thinking about that the way we used to think about it, right?
I mean, the, the ZA could already approve lot line adjustments before with none of this stuff.
So it's just...
So you would be adding, you would be adding a lot to the lot line adjustment criteria.
So it's just the minor then?
The minor is the new thing, and I don't think it should be as onerous as the major myself, but, because they are only gonna be two lots. I do, you know, I mean, I do think safety is, should be a consideration.
So right now, all of these design standards used to apply to minor subdivisions, we've now taken that and created its own category, so these are only major subdivisions, right?
Yeah, I mean, some of them, some of them should, I don't, I, yeah, I mean, I think you're just, maybe more, but, you know, these are redding regs, so you, you guys get to decide.
Well, I mean, it should be logical. So, so right now, we've taken, these used to apply to both, now it's only applying to major. If we don't make some of them apply to minor somehow, then it means nothing is applying to the minor and guiding the ZA and making the decision, right?
No, there were standards under minor as well.
Yeah, cookie cutters, sort of standards.
My computer battery died, so I...
Oh, that's a sign. So let me ask you this, let me ask you this. I, I just don't wanna create a situation where we're taking away kind of a, a pre-existing protection and now it's not there anymore and it causes a problem for somebody. So do you think that there's anything in the major that should also be in the minor? Or do you think that everything that's in the major for design standards is fine for major but does not mean to be added to the minor?
Yeah, probably a few of them should be.
Well, I think that's a good point, the safety, the, the emergency vehicles, that I, that should, I would think, apply. But the, the fear, just speaking out loud, is right now we have a very open-minded fire chief who, you know, could look at the situation, sign off, but in 10 years, we may have a cranky old fire chief, and then he refuses to sign off on anything, and then we have an issue.
And maybe that's why some towns say 15% or 20%, you know, whatever.
Yeah, but if you have a will to get up there to build a house and you have the vehicles, you know, there's a way.
Yeah, if you're going up in a Hummer versus going up in a Corolla.
Right, and then it could be a seasonal house where you're, you know, using it only during the summer months.
I guess the, the argument that someone made to me was, so you've got guests over, they've got a three-year-old, the three-year-old's choking on chicken bone, you've got a driveway like this, fire, ambulance can't get up it.
Put 'em on a sled. Get 'em to the road.
I mean, yes, there are sometimes situations beyond your control, so that no matter how well you design your regulations, someone's gonna come up and, you know, there's gonna be that 28, 20-inch snowstorm where the road's gonna get washed out, but you try to design for normal.
So are, how do you propose to take what should also apply to the minor and apply it to the minor? Do you wanna add it as text in the minor or do you wanna reference it in this part?
I mean, you could maybe add some of this under minor and then when you're looking at major, look at everything under minor plus the following.
All right, so that's a bigger conversation.
Yeah, could we finish this and then go back quickly and say, this could apply to the minor, this could apply to the minor?
You wanna do that?
I think that's efficient.
Sure.
Just have to take notes.
All right, so it's 5.6, right? What do you think that the ZA should not have to consider for a minor subdivision? Or what do you think is essential that the ZA should consider for a minor subdivision?
I think number two.
Keep it?
Yeah.
Well, probably number one also, right, is that? So I'm interested in, in both of your opinions. So when I looked it over, I, as I read through, I thought, oh, you know, the only thing that really doesn't matter here is the schools and the homeowners association, if it's, if it's just a two, a two-lot subdivision. But all these other things, it's hard to say that you should not have the ZA consider it.
So we're saying 5, 6, 5, 1, 2, 3, A, B, C, D, 4. So you're saying all of those, all of those with the exception of school services, which is 5C, and...
10.
Hmm. That's a lot.
It is, but those used to apply, those used to apply.
Because of just the two categories.
Because we've now changed, we've now created this new, less burdensome category.
Right.
And it, rather than have a hearing where the person would have to bring all this, they're just dealing with the zoning administrator. So the zoning administrator is still considering, this is their guide, this is their roadmap for how to contemplate this subdivision, but hopefully it would be a lot more efficient and expedient.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to think of execution. How do you make this as painless as possible for both the applicant and the ZA to get through this process without it becoming too, because the ZA, AZA, not our existing ZA necessarily, but AZA could be like, oh, this is too complicated, send it off to review, because they are responsible for all of this stuff now.
So and one question I had on number two was, it lists a whole lot of things. I don't think they're all necessarily on your list of things that you have to put on your site plan. It says all these things should be identified and protected. So the identified part, is that saying they should be on the site plan? How, what do you mean by identified? I mean, this is the existing language, so.
So this is, this is number two, talking about sort of significant features that have been identified in the Redding Town Plan, and/or which are an asset to the site and the community, shall be identified and preserved through careful placement of buildings, establishment, and development. So I guess if I have a big stone wall, I'm not gonna knock it down and put my house there. Or if I have a cluster of cellar holes, I'm not gonna fill them in and put my house there. Is that what that means?
Well, I, I don't know what identified means, I mean, are they, do, is this saying these should be on the site plan? Is that what you would interpret identified to me?
No.
Or...
Just like acknowledged. So if I'm the ZA, I, I look at a piece of property, I might say, I see you have a beautiful 300-year-old stone wall right there, let's preserve that, and you should be placing your building over here. At least that's what it says to me.
Okay, and the other thing that's...
Or maybe you shouldn't, if it was subdivided, I mean, I'm just following the language, but if you're subdividing, you shouldn't cut that cellar hole right in half. Let's put the line on this side or that side.
Right.
It doesn't say to me identified on the survey plat.
Okay.
It just means acknowledged and identified.
But it does also say things that the planning commission, other things that the planning commission thinks are important, which that shouldn't apply to the ZA, because how is the ZA gonna know what, what other things the planning commission thinks are important?
So if someone wants to, has a cellar hole, one of the ancient cellar holes, and they wanna build this really cool, modern house, and they build all around the cellar hole and they expose it with an interior garden of glass, is that okay? Is, you know, it's like, or do we wanna tell them they can't build their beautiful, modern house over the cellar hole and exhibit the cellar hole?
Well, that would be going around the cellar hole.
It's partly why I'm a little concerned about making this apply to minor, because there's a lot of, you know, discretion, and normally with a TA approval, you wanna make it cut and dry. It's like this apply, this, you know, this complies or it doesn't comply, and if it gets squishy, then...
Well...
And I, I could be wrong, but I think if you subdivide along a stone wall, neither property owner can disturb that stone wall if it's a division of property. But if it's internal to the parcel, you're basically allowed to do whatever you want unless it's historically tagged.
I don't know the answer to that. Definitely if it's a property boundary, yes, you can't.
Right, exactly.
What, what happens when it's internal, I, I don't know.
I mean, it's tempting to wanna just say, for a minor subdivision, the ZA should be guided by the considerations in major subdivisions and make good judgments. I know that that's not what we're looking for here, but that's the concept that I think, I think just taking all of these out of a minor subdivision is not appropriate, because they used to cover them, and now we've created a new category to try and streamline it, which is good. But I don't want bad things to happen, because we've now stripped away the protections that used to be there. And the ZA, right now we have one, it could be someone else, it could be someone else after that, it's only one person, there's no oversight. So giving them some kind of framework for their considerations seems like a good thing. Obviously, where it's referring to the planning commission's discretion, that's no longer applicable for the minor subdivision.
So the question is, how do we streamline it to make it easy for a minor subdivision without all of this?
I mean, can you imagine it working to be a little less explicit and say, in doing a minor subdivision, the ZA should reference these design standards and try to follow them as much as possible?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, think, yeah, like irregular lots, that's pretty, you know, pretty straightforward. I mean, spaghetti lots and flag lots and whatever. You don't want people to create things like that. I think there's been a lot of discretion there.
I mean, do you think we should be trying to pull out exactly what we want to have applied to the minors?
Maybe, maybe there's a way, and I, I don't know off the top of my head, but maybe there's a way to simplify somewhat the ones you want to keep. So they are a little, I mean, like with number two, just take out all the stuff about the planning commission with the things that you want to be considered. The existing, does it say existing conditions or something like that? And then if the zoning adminis, if it's something that's, it's a really wild lot that can't be divided in a normal way and it's got a lot of natural features or stone walls or whatever, I mean, they can always.
Refer it.
Refer.
Do you want to take a stab at a slimmed down version?
Oh, I'll try, yeah.
A slimmed down version to a incorporated minor.
To apply to the minor.
Keeping the same nature.
If you left it to me, I would leave it all in there except schools and the HOAs. So I don't really want my version. If, if you are willing to try a slimmed down version that would apply to the minor, it just, if, if we take that, slim it down and then add it to the minor, it feels like a lot, we're adding a lot of text, but maybe that's the appropriate thing to do.
Then you can, when you slim it down, it could be in the big subdivisions too.
It would apply.
Well, it would.
You would apply to the larger subdivisions, right?
Yeah.
Or could we simplify it and just have in the minor referencing major?
That's what I was thinking, just referencing.
Referencing, just very.
Referencing.
Yeah, because you're right. That's a lot of language to move back into minor.
And, and I think that the ZA, for the, okay, so not where it says the commission's determination, but for the most part, if you said, the ZA should consider these design standards in making their determination for a minor subdivision, mostly it works. So maybe we should reorder it a little bit and take the ones that are not applicable and.
Put them at the bottom.
Put them at the bottom or where it says in the commission's determination, except for minor subdivision, you know, we can, there are not that many places. I, I would hate to take all of that, compress it and then add it over because now we've just, oh, beloted our code.
Yeah, I was thinking, add it there and then say, under major, it has to meet the minor design standards plus. But, you know, this is another way to do it, to leave it where it is and just simplify it and.
So this is very specific. If we streamline it, I think that we might have unintended consequences of losing protections that are already existing.
Yeah.
If we want to do that, then that's, you know, that's not our mission, is to figure out how do we want to sort of streamline and minimize our design standard review. So that feels like a lot of work to do to see that we're not making a mistake or doing it inappropriately.
Well, if, if you wanted to say that the Z, the ZA in minor in considering the minor subdivision should refer to the design standards rather than the major subdivision design standards, just the design standards, just read through them to make sure there aren't things like planning commission, other stuff.
Yeah, where applicable, shall follow the design standards as applicable or something like that.
Right, yeah.
I think the ZA should look at these design standards and have that as a little checklist so that they're not chopping the cellar hole in half or, you know, cutting the stone wall and having it, you know, instead of following it down the way, you're creating a dog leg.
And you can maybe create a checklist for that. It's like, is, does the lot have an irregular shape? No. Yes or no? And when you get to the end of your checklist, if there's a lot of, gee, I don't know, then you just send it to the zoning board.
We got a lot of checklist to make. Okay.
That in itself is overwhelming.
I think we have a plan. Do we have a plan? Would you take a stab at putting the reference language and, and getting it to a place where maybe next time we could be like, that makes sense?
Yeah, I think we have to because we're, we're going to meet in September next time and.
Yeah. This is the August meeting.
Yeah. We gotta.
Got to pick up the pace. Okay.
Trying to wrap up, so.
Okay. So I think.
So we're not going to deal with small businesses? Okay, the only thing I really want to say about small businesses.
You present the topic for us, the topic play for us?
Yeah. You allow them in every zoning district and there's a very minimal definition and no standards. So you're really leaving yourself open to anyone doing anything anywhere, almost.
Small businesses everywhere.
And do you have a proposal for what is more common or what is?
Well, I mean, if you look at your purpose statement for your districts, I mean, you've got residential, low, you know, the RC district, you basically want conservation and low-density residential. So how does small business fit into that? I mean, it's kind of unusual to put small business in every district. Be more difficult to put it in your village districts where you have lower density.
Would you consider an online business, an online small business, that's run from somebody's.
That would probably be a home occupation, which you already covered. So you already have home occupation, you already have home business, which we do need to revisit because there were some questions about that. But then so small, small businesses beyond that.
Is that a defined term? Oh, yeah, it is.
But it's an odd definition.
Use or structure dedicated to retail communications like commercial or manufacturing. I have a whole lot of new uses for my ADU. Could you sometime in the month of August, if you have time, maybe make a proposal to us for what you think would be.
Well, I think the simplest thing to do, you know, given the lack of time and maybe even would be totally adequate is just to say, you can have a small business in the three village districts, subject to conditional use, subject to performance standards, subject to site plan review.
Something to think about. Something to think about. I can imagine restricting to, you know, wildlife habitats, you know, places that are, you want to conserve, but take it out of the equation for anyone's house outside of those districts or outside of those areas. I just.
I mean, they could still have home occupation or a home business. This is going up a step to a small business. I think with the home, a home business, you can have three employees. So not really saying you can't have a business, it's just.
If you could shoot something around for us to have sort of in front of us on the computer to think about and prep for the next meeting, even just a reminder, summary of issues.
Just say what I just said, but I'm not, I wouldn't want to.
Don't prep that. No, no, no.
Language because, you know, you may just.
But if you have examples that you could easily pull and say, here's what Springfield does, here's what Wes Windsor does, here's what Wadisville does, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Or if you remind me, I'll.
I was looking for small business for another town. I couldn't find anyone actually who called it that.
Okay. Let's start my manufacturing plan. Let's see. Anything else in, in the substantive part of this?
No.
Okay. I think everyone's burned out. The next meeting, so tonight was the August meeting because, I know I'm not able to attend the August meetings, so we pushed it forward a week. The next meeting that is normal is September 2nd, which is Labor Day. I think we've all agreed on September 11th. So for all of our audience, Richard and Claire, we're going to be on September 11th next, next time around. And any other business tonight? Public comment? In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
All right. Okay. Yep.
Aye.
Good. Thanks everybody.